My name is Rich.
I've seen your name a lot.
Yeah, exactly. I have a funny story to tell. I had a friend in Hanover.
They hold up well, too.
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah, he did that when was quite young, actually. I don't remember exactly how old he was. He would. I'll have to ask. He was quite an entrepreneur, even as a young man, I mean, a young boy.
Be nice to be able to put some pieces of their show on all this.
Newspapers, little monthly news newsletters and distribute them all around our family. About different things, country things, like sugaring and so on.
Want me to get his coffee?
I gotta listen to this now.
Yes, go ahead. Check in with JJ every morning and see if she has his hazelnut ready. If not, then he's got something to complain about, you know?
You can't make hazelnut for him at home?
Oh, guess not.
What do you think about chestnut trees?
I've been trying to grow some. They still don't have one that I can tell that will drop a nut that will turn into the American chestnut. And so I don't know, but many of them are survival. We have some brothers trying to grow now that somebody brought us.
Good morning. How long? Do you know before the chestnut flight, how important a food source that was for bears?
Oh, it's huge. These were bears and people. And the Native Americans planted them all along their route back when they were surviving colony. American chestnuts way up in Maine, two hundred miles north of Bangor. It was planted by the Native Americans.
I read that they have a genetically modified version that is blind resistant.
They are.
They're not letting them releasing it because there's concern about releasing genetically modified organisms into the environment and.
We release genetically modified corn into the environment all the time. Tastes like corn.
It is ten o'clock. All right, I will call this meeting to order. It's ten o'clock. It's the eighteenth of March twenty twenty-five. And as our usual custom, we open with public comments. And what do we have up there?
We have Jack and Carter and Jordan and somebody else with just a phone number that I don't know who it is.
So we're going to start. We've got three people in our audience. Do you wish to speak in the public comment section, Martha?
Well, I can wait and speak when the agenda item comes up.
Okay, very good. Rich?
Um, no, are we going to talk about the Pike House at all?
Uh, probably.
Yeah, you were going to set a public hearing.
Yes, we were going to set a public hearing. I don't know if we're going to have a lot of comments on it.
Maybe I'll keep my powder dry there. I mean.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, two things.
Just don't bury it in a shoreline district.
No, thank you, yes.
I found the Carter's letter to the list serve persuasive and wanted the board to know about that. Second of all, folks, we can't ignore River Road the entire rest of our lives. The south end is going to slide into the river or turn into a total mud pit. It's almost impassable. We're going around the other way now.
You talked about that unpaid section between.
Yeah, and particularly the part that just adjoins the Hanover line. That's at the lowest level of the river before it starts to climb. It's sliding and it gets not just ruts, it gets series of potholes that one side becomes unusable and the other side becomes a it's really in bad shape and it's been in bad shape for years. There were reports a couple of years ago in the town meeting saying that that had to be attended to. I mean, I know we got a lot of road problems, but that's one to pay some attention to.
Okay.
It is on Scott's list, just so you know. And there's been, it's on Scott's list. It's a priority there's been. It's big, big, big money.
Oh, no, I know. He's constantly dumping sand on the place that we, because it's the construction is bad, that we then have to go to the town and ask for more money for sand. And he's probably done that every two weeks or winter.
Thank you. So we'll just make a note. I know he is very good at being aware of things. This year's project is probably going to consume most of his time, but maybe we can bump a little bit.
It's going to consume all the money.
Apparently, there are five culverts, some of which they don't even know where they begin and end. Yeah.
Sounds like we need a new bypass.
We need to rebuild the road. Yes, you're correct.
Well, many, many, many years ago, Don Cutter on this board said it was his intent to let the Connecticut take back that section of River Road. He had no intention of spending a penny on it.
The bridge will be very expensive.
Yes, it will. I think that's the answer, actually. Or a dyke of some sort. Okay, and now we have some folks with us. Ms. Carter, did you want to make a statement now or are you just listening?
Right now, I'm just listening. If I have a comment, I guess I'll make it when it's appropriate.
Okay, and and Jordan. Hello, Jordan?
Not just Jordan, Jordan.
Judy? I'd like, actually, I do want to say that I second Phil's sentiment that I found the Carter's letter quite persuasive and so I will look forward to a public hearing.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's why we have them.
Yeah.
Yep.
So number three is we have some minutes from March fourth. Public meeting minutes. What do we wish to do with the minutes?
I'll move them.
Thank you, Ben.
I'll second.
Thank you, David.
Ben, aye.
All those in favor? Say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. They are approved. And then we have manifests. Fifty-three thousand, seven hundred, sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Ben?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
This one?
And Judy. And that's approved. And a brief follow-up review on town meeting. I think it went well, was fairly uneventful.
Surprising. A lot of people came up to me and said it was so uneventful that nobody showed up.
And we had a little discussion, a show of hands, which I thought was helpful. We going forward may talk about. We now have the authority as a select board to change when we have the business meeting. The voting always is the second Tuesday in March, so we'll need to keep pondering that and think about alternatives. Okay. Let's see. Well, I just morphed those two together. Do either of you or any of the folks with us have any comments on what your thoughts are about moving the business portion of the town meeting to another time or date?
I would love to see it at a time where more working people might be able to attend, whether that's late afternoon or evening. I think when you have a Tuesday nine AM meeting, you're drawing some kind of a line at seventy and the people seventy or over can attend and the rest of them, their wives are too busy to make that possible.
But they're the ones with wisdom. They're the ones with wisdom.
I resemble that remark.
That was the initial reason that a group of us got together to bring forward the conversation. It was fairly obvious as to who was there.
I understand the school meeting had pretty good attendance this year.
Yes.
It was controversial. Didn't change anything, but it.
But for the academic director and the director of special ed, neither of whom showed up, I don't think.
The special ed guy was there, yes, he was. Yes.
Whoever the academic curriculum leader is, did not.
I didn't think it was too controversial. I think there was a lot of different opinions and concerns about.
But it sounded like plenty of people showed up.
Yes, there were.
Plenty of people showed up.
Quite enough interest.
And there were way more no votes than I've seen in a long time. And I don't, you know, it's not an anti-education statement. It's a watch my tax dollar statement, I think.
I think so, too.
I think it was.
And there was no attempt to recruit people beforehand on that vote. I mean, there was no public, you know, telephone lists.
No, I didn't see that either. It seemed like who was there was there and stayed and then. Because we have seen that in the past.
I remember at least two town, two school meetings that went down over the years. That's when the budgets got out of hand and all of a sudden people you never expect to go to a school meeting show up and.
Well, I, for one, was very pleased that, I'm not sure what magic they worked, but the percentage of increase for the school outside of the bond was very small. When you put the bond in, then it still was smaller than it has been in the past few years. Both the school and the town, I think, have real issues. We're behind on what we need and there just isn't enough.
I Bob Green and his grandson came by the Sugar House this weekend. He's sending his grandson to a charter school over by Plymouth somewhere. There's a hundred and ten kids. Their annual budget is eight hundred thousand. And they get X amount of dollars from the state and that's it. They don't have any other means of taxation.
Right.
So that's just something to put in your head about how education can be done.
If I might add to that just for a minute, Mrs. Fendrick taught me division in fourth grade. Nine and a half million dollars divided by two hundred and eighty-two kids still comes out to over thirty-three thousand dollars a kid, no matter how you futz with line items and where you put them or don't put them. That's an extraordinary amount of money to spend per job.
And Bob's very happy with the education his grandson gets.
At the charter schools, yeah.
Going back to the original question about moving school district and town meeting into the same, same day, you are going to hear all the reasons that it's it's really hard. It's problematic because, of course, working people, this and that. Some people say, well, we can't possibly get away, come on the weekend because reasons. We have all these things planned. I am going to strongly encourage you to find a day, find a time, and try it this year, this coming year, and we'll see what happens.
Try both on one day.
But, yeah, find, right, find a day, both meetings on one day with something cool as a break between. I don't know, you know, a bouncy castle, something.
You have to go through the bouncy castle to get to the meeting.
There we go, something like, anyway, so.
And if you stay at the edge, you get a martini.
But not on town property, yes.
I would just say one thing, as having been a single mother, I think it would be nice if childcare was offered. I don't know if it was this year or not, and we brought my little grandson, who was very good, as a matter of fact. We did not disrupt the meeting at all.
But I'm sure that there might be some working mothers who might be able to come if there was childcare.
That's a good point, and in fact.
I know that the kids at school, the older ones, have offered it in the past.
It was offered in the past. This year, it was overlooked. For town meeting, the school, the kids aren't in school, so that's a problem.
We used to be when I was in school.
But the school district meeting, almost always, this was probably the first year they haven't had a babysitting kind of a structure, and it was because it was overlooked. There was a lot of last-minute preparations.
Well, I just think that would help some people.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Okay, well, we will put our heads together and see what we can come up with. The best, the best that I can ever remember was during COVID when we had the tent. But I don't think we can do that every year. So, thank you all. Did that, did that? Okay, we have the Lyme, we got a letter from the Lyme Foundation denying our request for their assistance for the RRFB, otherwise known as the Flashy Light. And we have drafted a response to them because we felt they didn't have all the information correctly before they made the decision. I would like this board to discuss whether or not we want to send that letter. Do we want to forget it? Do we think it's appropriate at least to correct the misinformation?
I'm in favor of sending it.
Okay. And you saw the latest version of it?
Yeah.
Yes, I corrected her name spelling. You're all set.
Dave did a good job with the editing.
Amazing.
My understanding, I think that, oh, well, I don't know, my prediction would be that sending that letter doesn't achieve anything. But, and I also, I understand if you're running a nonprofit that you might take the position that, look, we're just not going to fund projects that makes anyone unhappy. You know, and this project is going to make some people unhappy, unfortunately, but it is, so. Now, if their decision was based on the fact that we're mad at you because you put guardrails by the skiway and you weren't needed the skiway people, that's obnoxious and contrary to their mission and they shouldn't be doing that. But, you know, it's not our job to police that and there really isn't, I don't think terribly a lot that we can do about, about that. I don't object to sending the letter. I just think it's likely to be a futile act.
Yep.
Well, their head of their grants committee wasn't there. That's good head, John Campbell. I don't think it'll do any harm.
It seems premature, perhaps.
You have the better sense about the internal workings of that organization than I do because your wife's on board.
And they never should have sent a letter out unsigned.
Yeah.
That's pretty unfair.
Receiving a letter like that unsigned is not.
And so.
If you couldn't send a letter like that, maybe you want it unsigned.
So my last question would be, at the very end of our letter, we asked them to reconsider. Do we want to take that off, just to correct the facts, or do we want to ask them to reconsider?
Well, it doesn't do any harm to ask them to reconsider.
Now, my view is that regardless of their response, we ought to find the money and we ought to do this because we, I think.
Well, you know, last year, we had the money when the guardrails were in. We didn't have the money when the RF.
RRFB.
Whatever it was came up. And that's how our budgeting works. Someday, sometimes we have extra money and sometimes we don't.
The cost on this Dina is around twenty, twenty-five today?
Twenty-four, yeah.
And we don't, we don't currently have room for that anywhere?
Oh, I suspect you're not going to have room for a lot come December thirty-first.
What I would suggest.
It's going to be a tight year.
It's going to be a tight year.
Okay, so then in that event, we should just.
We put it in next year's budget, but my suggestion to Dina was long about October or November. Check out where we are and see if it looks like we could squeeze it in or.
Maybe Sean will retire early or.
Maybe we won't need to get so many vehicles fixed or, you know, we don't know.
Yep.
That's the part.
You know, the other option would be to engage in some private fundraising and see if there are people who would be willing to contribute to that kind of a project. I don't know, Ben, do you have any sense if there's an appetite for something like that?
I don't, I don't have a sense on that. Certainly did on the bridge, but not on that one.
I can ask around too a little bit.
Okay, well, I also am actually in favor of sending the letter. And I guess it doesn't hurt to ask them to reconsider their decision, so I believe Ben has signed it. There's the final copy.
Do we need to formally vote on sending this or?
I don't think we need to. And we did in our packets. We do have a copy of the minutes from January fourteenth. When we have an evening meeting, a public hearing or a public meeting on this question and we did have a number of the neighbors and the public here, so it truly was well-attended and people were aware of all the items. So that goes with that, that goes with that, this goes here. And I'm going to just set this here. I haven't signed it yet. All right. Now we come to the setting the date for the public hearing for the Pike House. And let me think. April can sometimes be a busy month. We'd have to be in the first couple of weeks of April or we could do it early in May. What's folks' thoughts on this?
I'm going to be out of the country for two weeks in April, so let me give you those dates, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to be out from April ninth. To April twenty-fourth.
Okay. So that would be, it would have to be coming right up for early May. My preference would be early May.
Yeah, early May, that ensures that the message about the hearing goes through the community.
Gets out, yeah.
And everybody has a chance to come.
And I think that should be an evening meeting. So five, six, seven, eight, Wednesday. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. That first week in May looks, on my calendar, the evenings are open.
What day of the week do you want it?
I wondered about a Wednesday.
So that's the seventh?
Yes. How does that look for your, for your calendar? Would that be okay for you? Okay.
And then six, six-thirty, seven?
Let's do, let's do six-thirty. I think that's a good time. Wednesday, five dash seven at six-thirty. Okay.
And this is a public hearing or a public informational meeting to talk about things? We're just going to take feedback from people?
I would like to take feedback from people because I would suggest we won't have made a definite decision at that point.
Right.
And then if we make a decision to sell it, then we would have a public hearing, I would think.
And you would make it after, okay, so this is.
Why do we, do we need to do that?
We don't have to.
If you, if you end up deciding to sell it, yes, you need to have a public hearing to inform people that you are going to sell it. Then you have the authority to sell it, even if people, some people tell you don't want, tell you they don't want you to. But this is, you know, this can be called a public hearing or called a public discussion.
Well, let's make it a public hearing and if we need to have a second one, we'll have a second one. But if it is a public hearing and we make a decision, we won't have to have a second one.
Okay.
Figure six-thirty to eight.
Yeah. It does make it a little more formal, but.
And that's good.
Let me put it in my phone. So lately, I've been not doing too well.
Yeah, me neither.
The location is going to be here?
I don't know the location yet. I think if it is going to be well-attended, this would be kind of tight. So we might have to consider an alternative location.
You can also use the cafeteria in the school, which is bigger.
Yep. Or maybe the academy building if the parking lot is good, yeah.
Because the gym would be too big. Plus, I think the plays in there.
Yeah.
But we can decide that in a couple of days.
Yep, we'll look around and figure out and we'll make sure that people know. Okay, six-thirty, May seventh.
Just thinking of it now, the academy building, looks like it needs some paint.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we heard that.
We're on it. Not on it, but yeah, it's there. That's on the, on the top of the get out a bid list because they have to have a bid for it, so.
Oh.
And that's hard. Hard to get people to bid on things like that.
All right.
We just can't call Paul.
So.
We wouldn't have to paint it if we sold it.
We made notes earlier that you had sent a letter out to the list serve and you heard Phil and Rich comment on that. Did you want to make a very quick comment or let it go with its distribution as it was?
I would apologize. There was a few people talking. I couldn't hear. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I just wondered if you wanted to make a further comment about what you wrote on the list serve or if you're fine with that. You noticed that two of our in-person people commented on your, your list serve letter.
If the people who are in the room are not people I emailed with personally, I just wanted to make sure I thanked everybody who read it, for reading it, that it was appreciated. And then I hope that people show up to share whatever they need to share for organs, either way.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We have an MS two thirty-two which I would like to say to the state, why do you do everything differently than everybody else does? It took me a long time to go through with our budget paperwork and the way they put it together and figure out, looked me like it was right.
Yeah, I went through it five times myself. It's, yeah, it's just everything and you have to add in the warrant articles and they go into other departments that we don't have them in and blah, 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 blah. So as long as the total matches.
The bottom line.
That's the important thing.
So I will move that we.
Please sign next to your name over to the right.
And send back the MS two thirty-two.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Ben, aye, David, aye.
Judy, aye. It is approved and the signing will come around.
Thank you.
And we have an energy committee request to change the committee charge. As I read this, I believe they are expanding or broadening the charge to cover more things. And, uh, thank you. I, I guess I don't see any harm in that.
I knew that was something they asked a long time ago and we had to send it to.
We must have sent it to legal.
We sent it to legal.
What was Legal's comment? That was the reason I, I was sort of holding them back a little bit on this. That was the, the reason I, I was sort of, um, holding them back a little bit on this.
That's so long.
I wanted to make sure that, you, you know, like if that charge was decided at a town meeting by the vote to the select board, can we just change it? And I, I just didn't know any of the background or the, how that all works. So I wanted to make sure we weren't doing something that we.
Right, well, the energy committee was voted, was voted as a committee at town meeting.
So presumably their.
Under a certain specific RSA.
Their mission was probably, uh, approved at that vote and on it, can the select board just modify that? I, I didn't.
The energy committee was created before that, then they went back to town meeting. And then their, their mission was written and all that. And then, um, then they went back to town meeting to ask for something, something else, and I can't remember what it was. Uh, but anyways, I know that the original setup of the committee was a committee, not a commission.
Right.
So there's the difference and that's where in lies the language that we have to make sure
No, I think that's this letter here.
Let me, um, I'm sorry, what?
It's this letter, a hundred percent.
Yes, yes.
All right, the only thing I'd like to see is a definition of clean renewable energy because I, I don't put wood pellets as clean renewable energy. I don't believe, I believe it's commodity and, and you're cutting trees down that store carbon to get that commodity. And so I, I think a definition should be in there. I was gonna make the statement like that.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at their charge for so long, so I don't even really know what that accomplishes.
Okay, so let's, it's still a committee, it's not changing.
No.
And let's bump that down to either the next meeting or the meeting after that. And we will have a relook at that and just see. My concern is I don't want undue pressure on folks that they have to put in some, like solar or heat pump.
You know, what would be really nice is if Jim would give us a red line so we could see what changed. You, you know?
Oh, well, he didn't supply a copy of the whole thing, but yeah.
Or we can generate our own red line.
Yeah, I have it. So I'll just stick that in it.
Yeah.
I'll send it to him and he can.
Jordan is really great with stuff like that. She can do the.
I mean, I should know because I'm on the committee and I think I did know when we first reviewed it, but it's been a couple of months. And we should get counsel to, or remember what counsel said or, or ask them again.
I'm sure I have an email. I just can't hunt for it.
I'm not sure that, that we have the authority to do this without some sort of town vote.
Right, right.
So speaking of the energy committee, they would, they are proposing, uh, an RFP, which is a request for, um, request for whatever.
Proposal.
Proposal, yes.
Yeah.
For, at the library.
You want me to give the background on this?
Yes, please.
So the energy committee raised some, uh, money for, originally the, the plan was to put solar on the fire station.
Right.
Then it was discovered that those solar panels put off a whole, often put off a whole bunch of radio frequency interference. And so there was a concern that the, um, solar system that if it were mounted on top of the fire station would interfere with their radio communications. And so the fire folks said, unless you can guarantee that that's not gonna be a problem, which no one can, uh, we don't want it. So that money had already been raised. It was then repurposed to, uh, do a couple of things. I forget what all it was.
To put solar on the library.
One of them was solar on the library and, but the library's much smaller than the fire station, so there was a bunch of money left over. And in looking at the library, it was felt that, by, by folks on that committee who are, have some expertise in this area, that the library could benefit from updating its heating and cooling systems and humidity control systems. And so the, the idea was to explore putting a, a heat pump system, you know, mini splits in the library. That would have the benefit of, uh, increasing their energy efficiency and, um, and also providing for cooling in the summer. Make that a more comfortable space when you get, you know, those couple of weeks where it's real warm. So that's what this is, the, I think, the, the, um, and, and they went out and got an energy audit. They had somebody come out who for free and looked at the library space and explored, you know, what, what's the best way to make this a more energy efficient structure? And, and, uh, you know, what can we do about humidity control? We have all these books and other materials that are sensitive and that. And so they got some recommendations and I think those recommendations have been incorporated into this RFP that would seek to have people come in and bid on, um, adding, uh, basically mini splits, uh, heat, heat pumps to the library to, um, improve their, their heating and cooling system. I don't think, the, the present plan is not to ask the town to pay for any of this, but to cover it with, uh, what's left from the donations originally made for the fire department, for the fire solar, and if necessary to go out and raise some additional money if that becomes necessary to cover whatever.
I also would like to add, it's important to know, so that people know when they are fundraising money, when you fundraise money, it has to go to what you specifically said. So once the fire department couldn't have this on it, the energy committee and Jim Norris himself contacted every single donor to get their permission to switch the funding to be used to the library. And everybody agreed that it was okay. That's the only reason why they came to us.
I was going to ask a question for the clarification, so thank you for that.
Yeah, there was some thought actually to, to elaborate a little bit further on that point about using some of these funds to repair the solar system at school, which is apparently no longer functioning. But that gets really complicated because the school is a separate legal entity. And then you're not just shifting stuff around within the town of line, you're shifting it to another entity. And so we gave up.
And you would have had to go back to all the donors and ask again if in fact it made sense, but.
Yeah. Yes, Phil.
From the library board, Jim's been in a number of times. We've had conversations, he and Judy have been sort of negotiating about how extensive these modifications should be. Uh, the people who did the RFP, of course, wanted to do more than she thinks is absolutely necessary. So I think it's come to a place where, um, there's a compromise about what's being proposed to do, uh, sort of less than what the energy committee suggested, uh, but what she feels that the library needs at this point.
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. So.
So we're just looking for the board to approve
the RFP.
This going out, you know? I mean, the RFP is written by people who know what they're doing. I don't know half the stuff when I read it here, so I don't think, we're not looking for approval for the actual wording. We're looking for approval to.
Permission to.
Go out to bid.
Yeah, and now all that is, is we get this back.
Right.
We don't, that's, you know, they're, they're, presumably we would have to, um, meet again and vote again to approve one except one of those bids, so.
Yes.
Usually what happens is.
Mind anything other than asking people to give us an estimate.
Right, and then they come in and then I, we open them, Jordan scans them all, they go off to the energy committee, they review them, and then they come back to you guys with a recommendation. That's how we usually do it.
Okay, so I will, um, move that we grant permission for them to continue with the RFP and.
Paul second.
And I.
All those in favor?
David, aye.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Ben. Judy, aye. They have permission to go forward with that. And we have this delightful little emergency ambulance service agreement.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that.
Which we already, well, the last time we signed it according to this was twenty twenty-three.
Yep. Yeah, it's not a yearly thing. And they have a rate schedule, which I don't have. They didn't send that. It's changed. Again, it's not a red line, so I don't know and I haven't had time to go through the two, the last one and this one to see. But there's some authorities added in here, um, that were not there prior, um.
And this is what we needed the extra money for at town meeting?
Yep.
Because the cost has gone up from what we anticipated.
Yes, and this is also the contract that, um, Naomi has, you know, looked at and done with the hand of her hand with us, so.
So we can get their, Naomi's advice on this.
If you want, right, if we want, if we have, I.
If we have legal questions, we have to find another counsel. And I'll just tell you guys right now, I'm not voting on this until we see a red line.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, when I was practicing law, if a junior intern brought me a contract like this and didn't bring me a red line, I'd be in trouble.
Well, this came.
Cause you can't tell what's changed.
Well, this was also interesting is that it came, it went from somebody at the fire, at the town of Hannover to our fire chief. And then it went from our fire chief to me. So I haven't even talked to the guy at the town of Hannover. I don't even know what's changed. I don't, you know, so anyways.
Do you want the town manager?
I'm going to, it's, it's, um.
It's Rob.
No, it's not him. It's, I, I have the name, so I just wanted you guys to give me permission to, to reach out and ask for a red line and ask the few, I have like four questions that I think need to be included in here.
Okay.
Just from what I've done over twenty years with ambulances and bills.
Okay.
If you don't mind, okay.
We don't mind at all, do we?
No, please.
We're happy to hand that off to you.
Thank you. I didn't wanna go do it before you said yes, so. I don't wanna ruffle any feathers, you know?
No, 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 no ruffling.
No.
Okay, and.
Excellent. Oh, yeah.
DOT Bridge Fund, Pinnacle Road over Troutbrook, Brook. They have been going up and down Pinnacle Road today. I have a feeling that the upper section is.
Oh, they're having some, yeah, well, there's some washouts and there's some. God's down on River Road this morning, but they're up there, but anyways. Yeah, so this was a grant that we had already previously put our name in back in twenty-three. And now they are just adjusting the amount. Um, I think it's really just an FYI, although they want you to say, yes, you're still interested or you're not interested. So they have upped it, um, by, oh geez, I don't know what the original figure was, but anyways, to, according to the increase in materials.
The updated preliminary cost estimate for that project is a million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The municipality share is twenty percent.
Right.
Except we have to pay a hundred percent of it and then we get reimbursed for eighty percent.
Looks like they increased their estimate by about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, yes.
Which bridge is this?
It's the one, yeah, it's the one up on, um.
Pinnacle.
Oh, that one, I guess.
It's that high up one, yeah. Yeah, so I would assume that it's okay. Cause we don't know, it's not committing you to, you know, when it comes around, you don't have to do it.
Well, they're informing us of an updated cost estimate.
Right.
And to request to respond from us to let them know we're still interested. They want this by April fifteenth. Okay, what should we do?
But again, it's not, you're not committing the money. You know, if they come to you and you haven't, you've decided that three hundred and eleven thousand dollars is something you can't come up with, you can say, thanks, but no thanks.
That's pretty cheap for doing a bridge, three forty-six.
For doing a whole for a million dollar repair insurance.
So they're doing the repairs on?
No, they'll bid it out.
Okay.
All right, well, I think we should vote yes.
I agree. I'll move it.
And I'll second it.
And I.
Give it aye.
Judy, aye.
And, and Judy, could you, could you say the number that they're projecting now?
They are projecting one million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand in current dollars.
Okay, thank you.
That's their updated preliminary cost estimate for your bridge project.
But don't forget, if it's not done this year, it'll probably go up.
Right.
We recommend budgeting an additional three to five percent per year.
Yeah, right.
So you have something there that you wanna send around to be signed or?
It doesn't need to be signed. It just needs you guys to say this in a meeting.
Well, we've done, like we said it. Okay.
You did, nobody moved it. You just said yes.
Yes, David, David moved it and I seconded it.
All right, excellent.
We have three requests for solar exemptions.
I, um, step out for just a minute and I voted favorable.
All three.
Okay, so there you go. So they're listed individually on the, um.
Yep.
Agenda.
Yep, they are on the agenda.
Two signatures.
Hartman, Davey, thirty thousand, Manquso, sixty thousand, Sawyer, ten thousand. And I would guess by the numbers that that's just a roof, not a tracker of any sort, not a ground mounted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's a ground mounted.
The other two are. This one is a roof mount.
To cancel out, you know, the assessment that goes on to the card because.
They don't, they don't get assessed.
They don't get an increased, right, tax.
So, um, I will move all three of these.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Ben. And all those in favor say aye.
And aye.
Judy, aye. He's already in favor, so that's approved for all three. I know a few years ago, I looked at, I really wanted a roof mounted system. And I had them cut out twice, but they told me it wouldn't work, but they would be delighted to do a tracker in my front garden. Which I didn't really wanna look at and I'm sure my neighbors don't wanna look at. And I said, so what would that be? Now, this is at least two or three years ago, over fifty thousand dollars. And I said, I'm not gonna live long enough to pay for that.
FYI, every source has been going up and down River Road offering to do solar assessments and possibly to install solar systems for free. Don't ask me what it's about, but it, um, happened at Sue McKenzie's house, happened at my house. I don't know what they're up to.
Well, there's still grants and stuff too.
Sure was every source and not some kind.
Call Margaret. I don't question her reports to me. Unwise marital behavior.
Good for you.
So, yeah, that is, that, that kinda brings out my alert system.
You, you wanna look at the rings are still on your finger after you shake your hand?
That's right. And then Martha, we do not have any Smith related item on this agenda. Oh, pardon me. You're right. We do have it. I kept looking for Smith. Yes. We have a veteran credit. Also, is this a first time or a renewal? I think this is a first time.
No, it's a, um, a switch from one property to another. And we have, we have to.
Give it aye.
Somebody has to move it first.
I'll move it.
All right, now all those in favor say aye.
And aye.
Judy, aye. That's approved. I apologize, Martha. I did not, though. We did those, we did those. Okay, Goose Pond Road cleanup.
So we have a, uh, we have legal instructions to the effect that we ought to provide seventy-two hours notice. My understanding of what the legal instructions provide is that we ought to provide seventy-two hours notice of property. My understanding of what the legal instruction provide is that we ought to provide seventy-two hours notice to the property owners, which gives them time to put material into two piles. One is a pile, or or segregated materials in a way, so that there will be one set of segregated materials that are already, have already been agreed upon by the town and by the property owner, which are not to be removed. The other segregated material section, or group of segregated materials would be things that are not, have not previously been agreed, but that the property owner would like to preserve. And then those materials, my understanding is that the select board or representative of the select board will review those and and negotiate in good faith with the property owner about whether or not they need to be removed or or can be retained. And then everything else gets removed. So, I would, you know, we should discuss it, and I'm happy to hear the property owner's input, but my view, at least initially, is that we ought to follow those legal procedures as we've been instructed to do and and give, you know, pick a date based on our contractor's availability and and then give the the property owner at least that required seventy-two hours notice. Maybe we can make it more than that, you know, just to be generous.
Yeah, and 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 the contractor, I spoke with him, you know, he's he's ready as soon as they, as soon as we pick a day. You know, I certainly.
So do you mean to check with his calendar to see when he's available?
Well, I think you pick a date, and I will, yeah, make sure that he can make that work. But I suspect you want to wait until it's warm enough so everything's unfrozen.
Well, that was what I was going to speak to, if I may, at some point.
Yep.
Right now, or the last time I checked, there was still snow on the property, and it's quite wet. And so we would ask that you wait a few weeks until it does dry out, because if they try to put heavy equipment on the property, it's going to do a lot of damage, and we prefer not to have that happen, because we are trying to negotiate a sale. And so, I mean, it 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 just would be preferable to do that.
That seems completely reasonable to me.
That makes sense.
Do we want to pick a date like in in late May?
I would think you want to, you would want to shoot to mid-May, right?
Yep, to late May.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We would definitely appreciate that.
And people have plenty of time, it's not a last minute thing.
And David, that is especially important for your calendar, because I believe you're the one who's going to be like the board representative.
Okay, well, I'm happy to do that. Do we want to say May twentieth? Does that work for you guys, is it Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Or May twenty-first is a Wednesday?
We hand you a Wednesday, Jed has to work every Wednesday. I I think the twentieth would be okay.
Well, the nineteenth is a Monday, that would be okay with me, too?
Yeah, I think maybe just the the twentieth probably would be better.
Okay. So this is, just to be clear, we're still tentative here, because we got to check with our contractor and make sure that that works for them, too.
And and I I just wanted to ask, would that be just the appointment or or meeting to negotiate on the items? And then the cleanup would proceed at another day?
No, no, that's going to, everything that, everything that's not disputed will be removed, and we'll negotiate as best we can about the stuff that you, that's not in the list, the court list, but that you want to keep. And and the stuff we agree on, you keep, and the stuff we, you know, we agree that you don't keep, goes, and.
Well, I'd like to have Jed have an opportunity to remove anything that that himself, that that you say, I mean, that that.
Well, he can remove anything he wants before the twentieth, too.
Yeah, he he's been working on that when he could, but everything was frozen in, and and some of it still is. But, you know, I mean, it it would be nice if he could have, you know, time that day, if if there are things that are not, well, how do I put it, that are agreed, I mean, that you say can't be there. But I will also point out that the attorney, when he, we weren't president, present when he was negotiating what could or could not stay, and he wasn't aware of Jed's toolboxes, which do have tools that he works with on a on a regular basis. And so they weren't, for example, in the approved list. So I'm I'm just saying that there are, there are some things that are certainly, they weren't mentioned, but there's certainly things that he would definitely like to keep.
Well, look, if there's stuff that's not on the approved list that we can't agree on at the time, at that day, then we're going to be back in court.
Well, no, if he could, if he could have a day or so to get them off the property, I think we could solve it pretty easily.
He can take them right now, he can go right now.
Well, we just, we we don't know what's what you're not going to agree to, that's the issue, so.
No, you guys have this.
We're not going to try to do that, if if there's stuff that we can't agree on, and he says, okay, I'll get it off the property, that's going to be fine.
Okay, that that's, if if you will do that, that's fine.
You know, if it isn't approved, then we're going to be back in court.
I'll make sure that it happens. I I will make sure that it happens, if if that's the way, so.
Where it may, I would be hustling out there to get anything that I really wanted out of there.
Yeah, well, that's what I've told him.
And, you know, we're not the first board to be dealing with this, we'd like to be the last board to deal with it, and I'm sure you want to.
I don't think it's going to happen that way. I I I see so many properties, not just in this town, but in other towns, too, that that look worse even than ours. And and it's it's going to become a a regular thing, I think, unfortunately.
I hope not, but, okay, May twenty, potentially, tentatively.
And what time?
Nine.
Okay. Can you do that?
Usually Ben, that's what time he wants to get up and get going.
Yeah, well, he has a long way to come.
Yeah.
All right, and my apologies for not being a little bit sharp this morning, but that is done. We now have other last minute comments, Phil.
Just to remind the board that there's an opening on the trustees of the trust funds. We have three candidates for that opening. Melanie Sett, Yolanda Bicharski, and the Nor Cash something or other, I don't know what, remember what goes after the title.
Usually you put something out on the listserv with, or I do at least, with everybody listed that you have to set appointments for. And they, and we say, send in a letter of interest to me and go from there.
And I I think we should also hear from the trustees, if you have three people that you are aware of you'd like to be considered, they should.
They they should send their letter of interest to me, and then usually I send them out to the individual committees. Then they talk about it, then they come and give a recommendation.
Cool, okay, I mean, we have the remaining two members here.
Right.
We could figure out whether to interview those people first and then come up with a suggestion to the board.
A recommendation.
So that that would be.
That's what you would do.
The standard thing that that we, the committee members, I mean, it's very convenient.
Once we get your letter.
Am I allowed to talk to Phil?
No.
I'm listening if you don't talk right out.
Once I get their letter of interest and everything, you know, comes in, then you guys, you two, can warrant a meeting, you have to sit down, decide what you want to do, and you can have each one of them come in and talk with you and go from there.
And then make that recommendation to the select board.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And they're filling out that term, and then we'll be elected at the next.
Yes, I think it's one year left on Stephen Castellotti's term.
Yes, it is, yep.
Excellent. Well, I had read up that, thank you for bringing that up, here was my little note, you can see that I'm not with it today.
I started a list of my own, so.
Government by sticky note.
Yes, I'll be in tough shape when the sticky notes are all gone. If we have nothing further from anyone, I'm going to move to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A colon three, Roman numeral two, little letter C, reputation. And I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, David, and all those in favor, say aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye.
Could I just inquire, that doesn't, that doesn't pertain to us?